All right, good evening. At this time, we call to order a work session of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners.
Recording in progress.
On Tuesday, October the 26th, 2021, at 6 o'clock PM. Due to the heightened risk of coronavirus or community transmission of coronavirus infection, Board of Commissioners has held all of our meetings and hearings virtually through the end of October, and we plan to make a decision tonight about whether or not to resume in-person meetings for November. So at this time, just I'm gonna call the roll so that everybody can see that all the commissioners are here. We have four commissioners that are, the four commissioners that are online. We have the fifth commissioner, Commissioner Franklin, who's here by telephone. So Commissioner Franklin, can you just, you're present?
I'm present.
Okay, and then Commissioner Foster?
Present.
Commissioner Swales?
Present.
Okay, Commissioner Wester?
Present.
Okay, so we know for the record, we have a quorum that consists of all five commissioners who are present tonight. So welcome everyone, and thank you for joining us. Just a housekeeping note before we go further, this is a public meeting, and we have several attendees tonight. By default, all viewers have the option of turning your video and sound on or off. However, unless you have been recognized to speak, the background noise for each participant is amplified and can distract or disrupt the meeting so that it's difficult for people to hear what's happening. We ask at this time that all members of the public who are viewing, please mute your sound on the Zoom app if you haven't done so already. At the appropriate time, you'll be asked to unmute yourself one at a time when you're recognized to speak during the public comment portion. Until that time, please mute yourself now. We appreciate everyone's cooperation to ensure that everyone can hear tonight clearly. At this time, we're gonna have an invocation by Commissioner Swales, and afterwards, we'll ask everyone to join us in the Pledge to the Flag. Our clerk will post an image of the flag for the pledge, so please stand if you're able to do so. Commissioner Swales?
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for keeping us all safe, for allowing us to come together and service for the county. I pray that you help us make wise decisions, that we take in all things into account, and give us the grace to do our best in what we are trying to do tonight. And then we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance
to the flag
to the flag
of the United States
of the United States and America
and to the republic
for which it stands
for which it stands
one nation
under God
indivisible
indivisible
with liberty
liberty and justice
and justice for all
Thank you. At this time, we need to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. So is there a motion at this time to approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented?
To make a motion that we approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Swales has made a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second, Matt.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented signify by raising your right hand. And Commissioner Franklin, how do you vote?
I agree.
Okay, all opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and tonight's agenda is approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is public comment, so at this time, we're gonna open the meeting for public comment. During this portion of the meeting, any member of the public may speak on any topic of concern they would like to address to the board. This is not a question and answer session, but if you have questions, we're going to ask you to forward those to our clerk, and we'll have someone contact you within the next few days and try to answer your concerns. We'll share the clerk's contact information at the end of the public comment section, so please have a pen and paper handy so you can write that information down if you need that. Please remember that all visitors should mute themselves unless and until they are recognized to speak. Otherwise, the combined background noise from all the viewers may distract and prevent anyone from hearing what is being said. Also, please turn off any background audio devices while you're speaking such as a television or radio because that will feed back into the system. Each speaker will have up to five minutes to speak, after which the clerk will mute you again. The five-minute rule will be strictly enforced, and each person may only speak once, and you cannot yield unused time to another person. Members of the public are required to follow the same rules of the quorum as commissioners, and this includes being civil and respectful and avoiding personal attacks. So at this time, if anyone would like to make a public comment, please turn on your video. A lot of you have, do not have your video on. Turn your video on and then either use the raise hand feature on Zoom or just raise your hand so we can see whether or not you would like to speak. Once you're recognized, please start by giving your name and address. First, unmute yourself and then begin that. So anyone who would like to speak. And right now, everyone's video is turned off, so if you would like to speak, turn your video on so that we can see that you're raising your hand. Would anyone like to speak during public comment? We'll wait just a minute, let you get situated. Remember, you have to turn on your video so that we can tell that you won't speak. Okay, there does not appear to be any public comments. We're gonna have the clerk share her contact information for a few moments. If you have some questions, you'd like someone to call you back, you can write down her contact information, and then we will, someone will get back to you in a couple of days. Also, at this time, the clerk is going to automatically mute all participants. You'll be able to view, you just won't be able to speak. Afterwards, commissioners, I'm gonna call the roll again to make sure that everyone, that the commissioners are back online, that we can hear them. So we'll wait just a minute in case anyone wants to write this information down. Okay, thank you, Ms. Finger. At this time, I'm gonna call, just kinda call roll again, so please answer. Commissioner Franklin, can you hear?
Present.
Okay, Commissioner Foster?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Swales? Mistress Wells, if you'll unmute yourself? Okay, can you hear? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester?
Present.
Okay, and Mr. Turner?
I'm here.
And then it is, let's see, Mr. Delosier here tonight?
No.
Okay, all right. The next item on the agenda is a personnel report, so Mr. Turner, do you have anything for that tonight?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is 6A, the ACCG restated policy. The ACCG has advised the county of the need to amend and restate our 401A defined contribution plan for county employees to keep our plan current with changes in the law and to protect the plan's tax qualified status under the IRS code. So this time, I'm gonna ask our county manager, Mr. Turner, to review this item with us, and what we'll do is plan to consider a resolution to adopt the amended and restated plan at our regular November meeting next week. So Mr. Turner?
Um, so like I mentioned, this is just an update to just in compliance. So basically, what we have with this is an IRS advisory opinion for restated ACCG 401A defined contribution plan, the restated ACCG 401A defined contribution plan document, the 401A adoption agreement, and what we would need to do is form a resolution to adopt the restated plan. Essentially, what this is, is it's just going to be something updated that doesn't affect anybody that is current. It's already the past plans that we have had. We did confirm that with them, so essentially, this would be something that would be moving forward for our plans, but something that we would have to adopt to put into effect going forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. I'll just ask commissioners one by one if you have questions. Commissioner Wester, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Commissioner Foster?
I don't know.
Thank you. Commissioner Swales?
No.
Okay, and Commissioner Franklin, do you have any questions?
No, sir, I don't have.
Okay, all right, well, what we'll do, included with those documents was, I believe, a resolution to use unless that needs to be modified for our county, but I think the plan would be to adopt that or consider that for adoption at Monday's regular November meeting.
That's right.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to the next agenda item. The next item is 6B, L-MIG 2022. So commissioners, each year, we select roads for resurfacing using funds from a local maintenance and improvement grant that we received from the Georgia Department of Transportation. We all have a list of the proposed projects for fiscal year 2022, so I'm gonna ask our county manager to review this further, and then the plan would be, should be to approve that next week. So Mr. Turner?
Yeah, so like we mentioned, we do go through L-MIG every year, so we're usually in the ballpark of about three quarters of a million dollars total. This year's GDOT funding is 593,689.76 cents, with our local match being 178,106.93. For our total L-MIG funding, with the GDOT and match being 771,796.69. So with the L-MIG for this year, we do have four roads that are listed, like I said, you have in front of you, with those roads being Neil Little Road, Bold Springs Church Road, Brittany Cove, and Lake Shore Drive. So like I said, this is what we do every year. The length and miles that this would cover for this year's is approximately 5.29 miles that we'd be looking to deep patch, level, and resurface, and some striping included within that, and additional shoulder work as needed. But basically, again, this is something that we would do every year and something that we'll continue to do and have a match. We're generally around this ballpark, I think, about every year of about the 750 to 780,000 dollars with meeting our match requirement. But that's the basics of the L-MIG that we do.
Okay, thank you. We'll just go around and ask each commissioner if they have questions. Commissioner Swales, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Wester, do you have questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, Commissioner Foster?
No, I don't.
And Commissioner Franklin, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, hearing none, we'll consider this for approval at next week's meeting on Monday. All right, and we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is 6C, preliminary noise ordinance. Last month, the board discussed a sample noise ordinance and asked the county manager and county attorney to draw up a draft ordinance for us to consider tonight. So the plan is to look at that tonight. Commissioners, you have a copy of that draft before you, so we just won't take time to go over this. I'm gonna have the county manager kinda present that, and then afterwards, we'll discuss it and give each commissioner a chance to give input on that. So Mr. Turner?
And again, everybody's, should have had time to review this. And essentially, what we looked at is trying to take something that does still fit the area. We don't wanna be limiting, and we kinda talked about one that was from Atlanta. I took something from more similar county as far as sort of the structure of it. And there's, and we can always add, subtract anything that we see within that. But this just essentially, I think, gives us the opportunity as we combine this with zoning map when that's finished to have a finished product, then a good product that, you know, does cover a lot of things. So it does have some things that are a little bit more specific to more rural areas like engine, engine noise, things like that, that you kinda get into, you know, some of the louder type of vehicles that you would wanna have. We can include more specific noise, noise things that if we wanna have those type of things as far as any guns. I believe it does have something about some specifics like guns within it and a couple other things that might be more specific to us. But we can, we can always add and subtract that. This is not a final document. But I think that this was probably a good starting place as far as being very similar in construction of the county and how that should look. So with this being from a similar type of county, a similar size, and similar background and makeup, I think that gives us something that's very close and that we can build off.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. What we'll do, we'll just, we'll go around the, kinda the table, so to speak, and let each commissioner speak once and then kinda discuss what everybody proposes. So let's start with Commissioner Foster.
Oh, I like the ordinance. I think we've mentioned in there that we need to exclude, you know, hunting. That's, you know, that's, we don't need to include that, and agriculture, machinery, farming, we should not have that included in that ordinance. That's only two things I had.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys wanna comment on that in particular?
I understand the hunting part. What about, I don't have it in front of me, target practice, you know, things like that on someone's land. How do we address that?
That's a good point. I think it should specifically exclude any kind of hunting or recreational firearms use or target practicing. A lot of private landowners out in the country target practice. And the specific wording in this ordinance says that hunting is approved on land that is zoned for hunting. And I don't, I don't think we have land zoned for hunting. I think it should just say, as long as they're hunting on private property with permission and in compliance with the law, that that's excluded. But I think as far as target practice or any recreational activity, as long as it's conformity with the law and it's during daylight hours, I think that's fine. How do you guys feel about that?
Yes, I'm good with that. I had several people call me asking about the, you know, just target practicing or just shooting sporting clays and things like that. Wanted to make sure that was not gonna be something that was gonna be pushed out because there is a lot of that in our county. Had some call me about the possibility of night hunting because you do have that with some of the coyotes. Some folks hunt coyotes. You have some folks that do some raccoon hunting at night and everything. So, you know, they were kinda asking about that, and typically, something like that's gonna be out in the country. It's gonna be away from home, so I really don't see an issue with it, but they, you know, they were just concerned that, hey, if I was to go do that, you know, am I going, am I going to be held liable if somebody calls involved and everything? And y'all have hog hunting in that, too. That's something that's sort of becoming pretty
Pretty common.
With the amount of hogs coming into Franklin County, so.
That's a good point. I think if we just say they're hunting on private land with permission and conformity with law, that's gonna cover, each animal has a certain season and time of day that you can hunt. So as long as they're, they're doing that, I think they're good. Now, target practice probably ought to be in daylight hours.
Yeah, I would agree that. I would find that should need to be in daylight hours.
But the hunting could be, you know, any time that it's, that it's allowed by law, depending on the type of hunting and the season, that kinda, that kinda thing.
So real quick, this one, go ahead.
I was gonna say, did Chris Phillips contact any other commissioners? Because he has a target range he was concerned about. It's an existing range over near Red Hill.
Yeah, he contacted me, and I had a long conversation with him, and I agree. You know, what he is, he's doing, I think, should be, definitely be exempt because they do a lot of law enforcement training out there as well as a lot of, I guess, gun safety training for the public and everything. He does classes like that, too, and I do think that would be something that shouldn't be exempt from the noise ordinance because, you know, when he does things, it is, it can be very loud because they do a lot of simulation things out there, too.
I'm sorry, Mr. Turner.
Yeah.
What were you gonna say?
So, yeah, I was gonna say, in the exceptions, it has noise exceptions for hunting activities specifically. It doesn't have a time restriction to that, though. So it just is, so it's just saying any noise associated with general hunting activities. Just, and it just goes on to say, as long as it's occurring basically on land, properly zoned for that or, or the use made for by that. But we would need to just maybe add something in the effect of target practice for either business-related purposes or recreational purposes.
Right, and I think we ought to modify that where it says land zoned for hunting because we don't have, just say that if they're hunting on private property with permit, with permission, the landowner in conformity with law, then they should be fine, whether it's day or night, right? Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yeah, I would agree with that because we don't have any specific zoning for hunting.
We, we had, I had, I had people contact me about that they were afraid this was an attack on just Second Amendment rights in general. So I think we should put a statement in there that says nothing in this ordinance is construed to limit or impair individual rights under the Second Amendment because that's not what we're trying to do. We can make that clear, and it doesn't detract from the rest of the ordinance.
I would agree with that.
Okay, Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, sir.
What about, what are your thoughts?
I got a call from Chris Phillips, too, and I told him that, you know, the noise ordinance, they should be exempt, you know, everything should be okay because they do it in the daytime. They don't, they don't do it at night.
Right.
And I used to carry cars to them, and they would shoot those things up. They would be lead from the bullets inside the cars when I'd go pick them up. But, you know, like someone else said, there's training there for law enforcement. And so sometime I can hear it at my house. I live 106, and it's loud, but it don't go on all night long. So, you know, I told him, I said, I think everything will be okay.
Right. One thing I wanted us to talk about, the ordinance uses a distance of 50 feet to determine something is a noise. So if I, if we compare that to, say, a football field, a football field is 300 feet. I was thinking more along the lines of maybe 150. That's half of a football field. That way, if something's audible 150 feet away during the times when noises, you know, shouldn't be occurring, to me, that's an obvious nuisance. 50 feet, I think, is easier for people to argue against. How do y'all feel about the distance? Are you fine with 50, or would you rather increase it?
What was the, what was the decimal, decibel limit?
We're not, it's not using decimals. It's just saying if you can hear a noise so many feet from the point of origin, then it's considered a nuisance. In that sample.
I don't know that I agree with that. I can hear my neighbors talking. You know, and they're not yelling at 150 feet. That's not.
Well, I think definitely 50 feet is too short. And again, we're thinking in terms of noise, like if someone is playing their music loudly in the middle of the night and you can hear it, you know, 150 feet away, then it probably is a nuisance.
Yeah.
But in my opinion, 50 feet is too short, but I wondered what everybody else thought. Commissioner Foster?
I'm good with 150 feet. I think it sounds good.
What are the
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can we not, can we not make it match whatever the setbacks are already? You know, if a structure or a house is already, whatever the existing setbacks are.
Well, if you think about in the country, I think a setback for a house is 35 feet side yards. So that would be, that would be 70 feet. If you went from house to house, does that make sense? Like for a typical lot, if you had a house that close, and they may not be that close together. That's the other thing. Out in the country, you know, depending on the lot size, the houses could be close together, but if they're just out on land, they may be far away. So that's gonna vary a lot. Commissioner Wester, what do you think about the distance?
Yeah, I would agree with 150 feet. I just wanna make sure that we, we do this in a way that, you know, if you have neighbors who don't get along with each other, I don't want them to be able to use this noise ordinance as a way to harass neighbors and things like that. And I do think 150 feet does make it better. But, you know, I just think with the, I guess I look at the number of houses coming in and looking at how close they're probably gonna be to each other. I just, I just wanna make sure we don't create a monster by doing, doing this noise ordinance as far as that. And I do think the 150 feet would probably help with that.
I agree with that. If you think about a subdivision, the houses are gonna be close together. You don't want routine living noises, you know, somebody to dislike their neighbor and use that to generate a complaint. But if you've got a house that the noise is loud enough to hear 150 feet down the street, and they're in the middle of the night, their neighbor probably has a real complaint.
Yeah, well.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I think Eddie was gonna finish. I got, I have something else to add, though.
Eddie, go ahead and finish, and then we'll come to you, Ryan.
And I mean, I would agree with that. I just, I know, I mean, I know from me growing up, I grew up in Smyrna, houses were closer together, and you did hear of neighbors who did not get along, and they would use things to harass the other one as far as, you know, like a noise nuisance and things. And I just don't wanna see us create that monster here in Franklin County.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, Commissioner Swales, what were you gonna add?
Again, I don't have it in front of me, but what is the, what is the proposed time limit on that? The noise, is there a?
That's a good point. There are some varied times in there. I'll just use construction as an example. In this ordinance, it says that in Part B, which is describing that, it says construction noise could go on as late as 11:00 PM. It could go from 7:00 AM in the morning to 11:00 PM, but then under restrictions, it says that, that it limits construction work to daylight hours. I think we need to be consistent with that. I don't think it would be acceptable for people to be engaging in construction work at 11 o'clock at night. So I would suggest we have some kind of uniform, just say daylight hours or say a limit maybe eight or nine o'clock. I don't think people should be using air hammers and pile drivers and hammering at 11 o'clock at night, for instance.
Yeah, I think, I kinda, I echo Commissioner Wester's concerns. I think, I mean, we all know it's easy to enact new rules and laws. It's hard to repeal stuff or to, if something's not working. I would be more in favor of taking more time specifically on the residential implications of a noise ordinance. I can see how we can probably work out the construction side and the commercial side. And I don't know if it's something that we can delineate, but I'm not, I'm not as comfortable just jumping into this.
Well, we're not gonna jump into it. What I would suggest is, I mean, we're gonna talk about it tonight, but that we submit a list of some of our concerns and let Bubba revise this and incorporate those changes, and then we can look at a revision again in November, I mean, at the work session and go from there. We can take it slowly so we get it right, tweak it to where everybody's satisfied with what we have in there because we don't, we don't wanna overreach. There's a, there's a part in there, for instance, about racetracks. Livonia has a racetrack that I think is actually in Hart County, but if I'm not mistaken, out on, outside of Karnesville, there's a go-kart track, maybe.
Yes, sir.
And it classifies in this ordinance, it limits the time in the evening after which you shouldn't have noise, exhaust noise. So say 9 o'clock. A lot of that racing activity occurs on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so Friday should be put with the weekend stuff. Another, probably the biggest concern that I have with this that I want also to look at changing, there are two things. Under special permits, Section D10 says that special events are required to have special permits. And so it says, for example, carnivals, fairs, tent meetings, revivals, quote unquote, any public gathering. I recommend that whole portion be striped. We don't wanna be given, we don't want people who gather in public to have to have a permit. Now, if something gets out of hand, that can be handled on a case-by-case basis. But I think that would be viewed as overreach by the public and overreach on our part. We don't, I don't think that's our intent to overregulate when people gather in public. This is looking at residential issues, you know, things that really cause an issue and the, like Brian said, the commercial industrial side. But the other thing is, this thing sets up in a permitting process where the Board of Commissioners grants permits for exceptions. And I think that ought to be left to the county manager or his or her designate. Keep the Board of Commissioners out of that unless maybe there's an appeal. Somebody wants to appeal a decision where the county manager said, no, you can't have a permit for that. I don't think that deserves a permit, but that would limit our part to it. So there's several things that I think need to be tweaked in this. And we can talk about them tonight, but I think it's a good idea to have Bubba rework it based on our feedback and then us consider it again before we get to any point where we're thinking about, you know, going through the approval process.
What kind of things would we actually, I mean, would need a permit that might go on within the county?
I think it's, if, the only thing I can think of is if there is a, if there's a business, something on the commercial side where there's an extended construction part, and you might grant them a seven or 10-day exception where they can carry out some kind of needed construction that might not be limited, say, to daylight hours, you know, something like that. But I think it should be rare. I don't want it to be revivals, and tent meetings, and public gatherings, and political speeches like this thing lists. I think that's going too far. I think that's going too far.
I mean, I, I think it would have to be a, a really special circumstance to require some kind of permit. Cause I'm, I'm not for making people get permits for each and everything. I just think that's-
Yeah, I'm not either. I, I don't, that, that's, I don't think, I think probably everybody agrees with that. I don't think that's our intent. I think that's probably for Franklin County, that's going too far. We're not interested in that. I don't believe, now somebody, if, if you have a difference of opinion, you're welcome to speak up. There, there was one other, there was one other item I, I think needs to be changed and it kind of goes along with hunting. Uh, actually two things, but there's a, there's a part in there that talks about animal nuisances and it, it says that in land that's zoned agriculture, livestock is exempted from, you know, people saying, well, the cows are, are, are braying or, or, you know, the donkeys or whatever making noise. But I think it also would need to include dogs, uh, because a lot of, out in the country where there are large tracts of land, a lot of people have dogs outside, they have hunting dogs, uh, a lot of people have packs of beagles. And if you've ever heard beagles, beagles make lots of noise. They sing together and they sing together at night when they're disturbed. And I think people live so far apart that, that that ought to be, dogs should be added in with that. I think that the animal noises should be restricted to subdivisions, single multifamily districts where people live really close together. Uh, to make sure animal noise isn't an issue there, at least dogs, birds, whatever. But I think agriculturally zoned districts should be exempt from that.
Now, I can agree with that. I, I do think we need to protect our farmers and, and I think, I think we've seen in the past and I think probably each one of us has, has received phone calls of, you know, somebody moving in from outside of our area and having an issue with some of the noises and, and things from, from farms and, and with them, you know, for some reason not in full understanding where they're moving at is the ag area. And I, I do think we need to protect the farmers in, in that, in that way.
I think so too.
We definitely have an, an expanding base, uh, coming into our county that are not used to those types of things.
Yep. The, the other thing that I, that I really wanted this sound ordinance to focus or noise ordinance to focus on is industrial noises. Uh, in the past, when we dealt a couple of years ago, and we're still dealing with it, noise from, uh, GRP, for instance. Noise was a huge problem and, and we didn't have anything to combat that with. And EPA would say, well, you can, you can enforce your own noise ordinance. We didn't have a noise ordinance. Uh, I think that we should have something in there that says that industries, uh, that create noise that can be heard, let's just say 300 feet, a football field's distance beyond the property line during the night, let's just say from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM would be considered a nuisance. Because that's when people sleep, uh, and we need to, whatever we decide on, we need to say to industries, when you industries come in, you sign off that you understand that you've read our noise ordinance and you agree to abide by it. And that way go and I don't think we can do anything about the existing industries. And we want industries to come in, but we need to protect the residential areas around that because sound is almost always going to be an issue. And this would give us a way to make sure people coming in know upfront, this is what we require and you agree to that. And it's sort of like when we, we do housing, when people come in and buy, uh, ag land and build a house, we've got that little sign off that, that they understand they're building a house in an ag district where there's going to be noise and smells and odors and truck traffic and that kind of thing. How, how do you guys feel about that? Having some kind of provision like that?
Agree with that idea.
I, I agree with it all. I just, I want us to be careful that we don't, we don't end up labeling ourselves as not one industry also.
Right. There's got to be a balance.
With how we do it.
There's got to be a balance and that, that should be, you know, part of that we take care of by where we put industry, you know, to the extent that we have control over it. But the other thing is we create a greater distance, you know, it's not going to be the same as a residential area. It would, if we set 150 feet for residential areas, that's not going to be the same because it's not realistic. Uh, but at the same time, I think we need some kind of standards. Commissioner Franklin, were you trying, I'm sorry, y'all, were you trying to, we don't want to leave you out. Were you trying to say something?
I was gonna, I don't know about, uh, from seven to seven. Uh, I was thinking seven to 11 because when I worked at Webco in Coa, they had a second shift. And guess what? There was noise when everything got quietened down around Coa. Webco, you could hear the plant running. And so if a company comes in and going on a second shift and if we, if we lock down at seven-
That might be too early.
They might be cutting their own throats.
That's true. Well, why don't, why don't we do this? Uh, let's take a week or so and everybody individually email Bubba, our attorney, with your suggestions, think, list things you want to see removed, things you want to see added or other things you want to be, uh, see considered. And then what he can do is take that collective feedback and revise this. Uh, and hopefully we can look at it as some sort of revision, uh, at the November work session and then go from there. Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah.
It sounds good.
You know, I, I, I want a ordinance, but I want us to have something in case something comes in like GRP that we have something, you know, to say no to about it. Uh, you know, I agree with that a hundred percent. Because I, well, all of us had a lot of complaints about that, but we have nothing to fight it with.
That's right. And you know, as other industries look at the area, particularly ones that may have the potential to create large noises, it'd be nice if we have something in place before they come, uh, that, that we can use to help regulate that so that the impact on surrounding neighborhoods won't be as severe maybe. That, to me, that would be the ultimate goal. Does anybody else have anything you want to add before we move on?
Uh, yeah, I think, again, I think we need to just, again, when we're making these suggestions, focus on what the reason is, the nuisance and what type of areas we're trying to protect. And I don't think, again, I, I do think we want to protect farmers who, I mean, they have a way of living and it's, it's their way of living, you know? They do have dogs, they have cattle, um, so I don't want to restrict their lives. But I think when we're talking about this, again, the focus is new development, neighborhoods, um, that kind of thing. Um, I'm just, I'm wary of us being too restrictive so that it's not, it's not realistic, you know, or, or it's not. I don't want us to be trying to take care of a problem that might not even be there in some sense, if that makes sense. Um, the other thing I noticed in the, what I, what I got, phonographs. Have we had a single phonograph complaint? People playing their phonographs? Uh, did y'all read that?
Yeah. I think that's-
I had a loud, I had a loudspeaker complaint with, uh, from somebody.
The little winding phonograph?
Yeah. Some of that's probably legalese where they try to list in every possible sound, sound producing device they can come up with. So, all right, so the plan will be everybody take the next week, make a list of things you want to see removed, added, changed and send that, you can copy everybody, but send on the board, but send that to Bubba so that he can then take a couple of weeks, consider all that feedback and revise this so that we have something that's more to everybody's liking. And then we can look at that again in November and then see what we like or dislike about that revision. But we can take it slow. Uh, we need to have something in place, but, but you're right, we don't need to rush it and, and wind up, uh, being guilty of overreach. Is that fine with everybody?
Yeah. Fine with me.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Mr. Turner, do you have anything else you want to add on that?
No, I think I'm good with that.
Before we go? Okay. All right, moving on, the next agenda item is 6D, Colston Drive. Uh, most of you remember in our regular board meeting on February the 3rd, 2020, uh, the board voted to adopt Colston Drive end to end and perform maintenance on the dam that it crosses. The board voted to adopt the road and maintain the dam in part because of the large number of families. There were about, I think, 18 at the time that lived along the road behind the dam. And due to the poor condition of the road, they were cut off or, uh, from some basic services. Uh, so it was a public s- uh, safety issue. Colson Drive crosses a dam that holds back a small pond and there are some safety issues there. Uh, since we voted to adopt the road and maintain the dam, we, we fixed the road issues, uh, and it's a much better road. It's more passable, but we haven't so far been able to do anything with the dam itself. So last month, we asked our county engineer to come and discuss with us what the specific problems were that needed to be addressed with the dam. Uh, so at this time, I'm going to ask our county manager, Mr. Turner, to kind of update us on that and see where we are.
Um, at this time, I, I know that the last place where we left it after, um, John spoke about this, we're leaving options about what we wanted to do and what legally that we could do. Um, at this time, as far as I know, and nothing that's been sent to myself or I believe to Kayla, uh, we haven't received anything from the county attorney as far as what the legal options were. I don't know if you've, if you guys have had anything in particular, uh, but at this time, we don't have anything additional, um, that we could move on at this time.
Uh, right now, is he just moving to try to determine the property owners and who we need to contact? Is that the plan?
Right, yeah, we last, we last talked about making sure about exactly how we need to handle the property owners, um, what that would mean versus those different scenarios as far as, um, you know, if we're looking at draining it and doing away with, with the, with the dam a hundred percent or if we're going to drain it, replace the piping, what we would need to do and, and how we could do things as far as still getting them, um, access to their homes. Um, but I haven't received anything at this time, um, or u- update on that one.
The other thing I think would be to contact the landowners who live up above. The people that live behind the dam, because there used to be an old road there. If there's any way they would work with us to temporarily open that road, that might be a way to provide access to people who live behind the dam while we work on the dam. Because whatever we decide to do, once we begin work, people won't be able to go across that dam or go in and out of their, their property. So we've got to, we need to reach out to those people and see if there's any way they would permit us to open up a temporary road. Cause that would help a lot. But that's something I, I don't think that anybody's done yet. So is that something we could, that we could get the ball rolling?
Yeah, I think we could do that and see about, I don't know if that is cut off or not for sure, uh, that road that you're talking about back there. But, um, but if it is a possibility, then we can see if it's something that we could utilize.
Okay. Commissioners, let's go around, do you have other questions about this? Commissioner Foster?
I wouldn't look that today actually in person so I can kind of get idea of what it looked like. But, uh, but yeah, I would say you're contacting the, uh, you know, the owners to kind of see what they think or if there's a way we can get around that. Because like you said, if we fix it, whatever we do, that access is going to be cut off, you know, for weeks or months or however long it takes to fix it.
I, I think all of us have visited that, that road at one time or another, but, but how would you describe the condition of the road itself right now? I mean, is it passable? Can you get in and out? I mean, it is a great, a dirt road.
Part of Colston Dam was fine. You're going up, the hill is a little rocky, but that's just the way I think it is. It's the way it is going up a steep hill, but the dam itself looked, looked really, it looked good to me today.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Wester?
I, I have no more questions on it.
Okay. Commissioner Swales?
I have nothing else.
Okay, Commissioner Franklin?
The first time that, uh, the county worked it, I went up there, far as, you know, riding up the road. Good, but you know, there's some, you can see some spots that perhaps would have any issues. So we just, we got to figure out a way to go about fixing it.
Okay. I, I think we're all agreed on that and that sounds like a plan. I, I went to visit the road, this was before we adopted it and you almost literally could not drive over the road, not only on the backside of the dam, but on the front side of the dam. And then after we graded it and began to scrape it and work it, it was, you know, worlds apart. Uh, you could at least, the road was now drivable and I think that made a big difference for the people who live behind the dam. Uh, we just need to at some point figure out what our plan is for repairing the dam. All right, the next agenda item is 6E, uh, November meetings, whether they're in person or virtual. Uh, this past summer, locally and nationally, there've been a dramatic surge in coronavirus cases. And we saw a huge spike in cases locally over the summer. Uh, because of the continued high level of community transmission. And that just means if you're in a, a large group in public, when, when the numbers had spiked, there's a good chance you could contract the disease. Uh, but anyway, during that time, the board has held all of its meetings virtually for September and October. And our plan has been to reevaluate that at the end of each month. Uh, so what we need to do tonight is look at the data and make a decision about November. Uh, in June, if you look at the testing data, there were about 19 in Franklin County. In July, that increased to 99. In, uh, in August, 495, and then in September, about 502. So far, there've only been through Friday, I counted around 134 in October, so that's a huge decline. So with that information in mind, we'll just open the floor to discuss this. I, I think in our decision-making, the, the safety of the, of the public has been foremost. You know, some meetings we have, there'll be one person there. Some meet, the next meeting, there might be 30 or more. One meeting might last 20 minutes, the next meeting might last two hours. And when you have periods of high community transmission, you don't want a large group of people in a small space kind of breathing the same air. But I, I do think the numbers have dropped dramatically. So personally, I think that if we resume in-person meetings and, you know, encourage people to practice social distancing, wear a mask if they feel like that's appropriate, then I think we'll be fine. But let's, let's go around the room. We'll start with Commissioner Swales.
I'm fine either way, you know, I'm, I'm more about protecting those that are vulnerable than I'm worried about myself. Um, so I do know that the numbers are down, like you said, in the school system. I don't know that there are any active cases other than maybe seven or eight kids at home right now, just because of potential exposure. But I don't, I don't think there are any life cases right now. So I'm good either way.
All right, Commissioner Wester?
I mean, I, I'm good either, either way, but I, I'm not going to lie to you. I, I'd much rather have these in person. Uh, I, that's just me. I, I, I think the meetings tend to go better. I think our Zoom meetings have done very well. But I do think they tend to, uh, when you're in person, things tend to, uh, work a little bit better. And, uh, I, I do understand, I, I do want to protect those that are vulnerable and everything. But I, I do believe with the cases falling like they have, as long as we're practicing social distancing and those that feel like they need a mask on, can, you know, they can wear a mask. I, I, I think we could go back to in-person meetings.
Okay, Commissioner Foster?
Uh, like Eddie and, uh, Ron said, I'm good either way, but I, I think we could, it's time we could probably go back. Uh, in-person meetings, um, is what I would lean towards, but I think I'm, I'm good either way.
Okay. Commissioner Franklin?
I'm with, yeah, I lean toward in-person. I, uh, I like that.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
Uh, yeah, I think we'd be okay with, with in-person at this point and just, you know, recommend social distancing is still some of the precautions necessary.
Okay. All right. The consensus seems to be that we'll resume in-person meetings. So our next meeting is our regular monthly mi- board meeting on Monday. Uh, that's, I believe that's November the first. So we'll plan to go back, starting with that meeting, to meeting in person at the Justice Center in Karnesville. All right, if we move on to the next, uh, agenda item, 6F, that's a service delivery strategy. Uh, commissioners, you've been provided with a copy of the updated service delivery strategy, which is required. It's something that's required by local governments in Georgia and it has to be updated from time to time. Uh, the documents that you received are the revised service delivery strategy for Franklin County uh, and a certification form, which you, the board needs to authorize the chairman to sign. Uh, the, the city, the cities in Franklin County and Franklin County have been working on this with Adam Hazel and the Georgia Mountains Regional Commission for the last year, roughly the last year. And so they have this update ready for us. Uh, the services that have been revised or added are code enforcement and roads. And then there for revisions, uh, public works, senior services, wastewater services and water services. This is a really big document. So, uh, and we got this, uh, sort of, sort of at the last minute for this meeting. So just want everybody to take time and, and look at that. If you have any questions, uh, we'll take those tonight or, or Monday and then hopefully vote on Monday to approve or authorize me to sign that certified, sign off on that. Because all the cities and the county must sign off on it before Adam Hazel can proceed with the Department of Community Affairs. So at this time, are there any questions about that?
Is, is everything looking good with the mayors or, or they? Have they had a chance to look it over and, and sort of give their feelings? Have they had a chance to look it over and and sort of give their feelings on it?
They met recently, uh, and I'm not sure if uh if Mr. Turner met with them.
Yeah, yeah, I was there also myself, uh, Livonia, Franklin, Springs, and Royston, we we all met with Adam, uh, and went through this, signed up with Adam.
Okay, and and what has to happen is not only the the county has to, you guys have to authorize the chair to sign, but each city has to do the same certi- so it's not just something the county is going to force, each city has to agree to it uh along with the county. We would just do our part, you know, agree for our part, uh, unless there are problems with it that we see. And he, Adam says that it's still not too late to make revisions. In fact, once he submits it to DCA during the time that it takes for them to authorize it, we can actually revise it during that time too. If I'm not mistaken, he said, was that about a two-month process, Mr. Turner? Somewhere along those lines?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
What the plan would be, and and we'll still take questions tonight, but the plan would be to uh authorize this on on Monday. Uh, so does anybody else have questions? Mr. Franklin, do you have questions? I think I dropped him. Anybody else have questions? Okay, all right, we'll move on to the next agenda item. And that's the manager's report, number seven, so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Turner.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things to go through real quickly, uh, that we'll talk about is that our fall retreat uh will be November third, uh, so that'll be um, we'll have our Monday meeting in person, then we will be in person on November third, starting at noon at the Community Center for our Fall Retreat. Um, just so everybody knows, that is our planning session, um, involving the commissioners and departments, uh, department heads are invited um as well. It is a public meeting for us, so anybody is welcome to that, but this is our planning as we get into the next uh budget season, uh, with the budget uh likely kicking off there at some point in January. Um, next thing just talked about is the Economic Development Summit that we had last Wednesday. I just want to thank the IBA again for uh for doing this, setting this up with Roe Roberts uh from Georgia Power. Uh, this one was citizen focused, uh, so this was just the one that was, oh, that we invited citizens, we had decent turnout. Um, just, and and we also do have a video of this that is going to be posted on our on our website and social media tomorrow. Just going through telling citizens about the processes to how business is coming in, economic development and what that means and what those processes are from their perspective. Um, so I think that was really good and we had um some good questions and good answers uh that came in the, I think the citizens were able to learn a lot from that. Uh, so again, we'll have that, we'll get that posted on our website and our social media tomorrow. Um, the next thing I have uh that you have a copy of is just um kind of going through the financials. These are more of the FY twenty-one financials uh that you have in front of you. Uh, they are very preliminary. This is, this is going to give you a kind of general idea of the health of the uh of the of the county financially. Uh, so the two items that you did receive from this are revenues separately and expenses separately, um, just broken down by uh department. Uh, so just kind of look at what that says for revenues is it just shows you an actual total revenue of about twenty-six and a half million dollars uh that we had an actual revenue received uh over the budgeted twenty-two and a half million dollars. Um, for our expenses, it does, you do have listed department by department, uh, but just the bottom line figure, we were under in actual expenses versus budgeted, so budgeted was about twenty-five point six million uh with us having an actual expense of about twenty-three million. Uh, what this means for the county, uh, just in prelim, and these numbers will change because they're still into the end of the fiscal year transfers that have to happen through our auditors, is it means that you have an initial fund balance of about three point six million dollars. Um, with that three point six million dollars, again, that number is going to change almost immediately, just because there are still transfers to and from the general fund that have to occur. Um, those transfers that we always have to do every year are things like uh like nine one one fund, anything that's not self-sustainable. Um, so any of them that aren't generating revenue, uh, I guess would be the best way to think about that. So you'll end up seeing a change in this, so you'll probably almost see that initial fund balance go away. But just on the uh forefront of that, this just gives you an idea of the general health of of the operation. So I would say general health just by this is decent. Um, the things that we still want to focus on is still some things that have, I think, been mentioned in prior audits and will probably be mentioned again, diversification of revenues. Um, I think we go on expenses as far as how we do um maintain our expenditures. And we're a little bit high, I think, in some areas, probably more due to COVID uh with having some issues there. Uh, but as far as just your overall uh revenues, uh, is probably where to focus on. Uh, looking at the diversification of your revenues, um, I know it's a little bit tough for us to do that with a third of our revenues coming from some form of tax base. But we can still look at things like how can we still generate more splosh? All those type of things, even though those are restricted funds, uh, they still do uh play a part in how you are expending uh on on the expenditure side of things. But this just gives just the general idea of exactly where we're going to land. Again, that initial fund balance is going to change considerably whenever the auditors and I sit down to take a look at exactly what transfers need to be completed uh at the end of the year, and we have some catching up to do from the prior years as far as those transfers. Uh, so we've kind of got a plan in place, so we'll sit down and kind of map out exactly uh where we want to go with that plan as uh as far as concerning this year's fund balance. But any questions, so?
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No.
No.
That that you kind of touched on, uh, and I want to point out, our our county manager came at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Uh, and it it looks like overall uh that our revenues exceeded our expenditures, which is good. But if you break it down by department, like he pointed out, there there were a lot of departments who went over their budget and and I I just wanted to clarify, what do you think that, I mean, you are a fresh set of eyes from outside the county, where do you think those uh those excess expenditures came from? Was it all COVID related? Or are there other factors we need to consider for this year?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, I think probably a good chunk of it is probably COVID related. Um, just based off of looking at some of the amounts and and what they're pertaining to, um, I I'd probably say a- as you kind of think about the prior fiscal year and where we were um operating effectively, then you you have things to where you either have people's out sick, so incurring more overtime, you have uh changes to where it's, you know, the equipment that you're needing to buy. So you still have a lot of things that uh as far as the overall setup of just COVID, kind of speaking generally, you you're going to have a lot more expenses related to that. Um, and yeah, you can say that you maybe got grant money and whatnot, um, so it doesn't necessarily offset that within the expenditure side. So you could see a little bit of um the increase to the actual revenues being affected by that. I'd probably say revenues, it's just um, it was just probably under budgeted. I mean, our our prior year FY twenty, we finished at about twenty-six point one million, so we were just five hundred thousand dollars over what our prior year revenues were. So I so I'd probably say your revenues are pretty, pretty solid for where they were, but um expenditure wise, you did probably, I think, have a lot of things that were COVID related, uh, whether it be a personnel matter, a structural matter, facilities matter, or a precautionary matter.
That that's really good because uh that we we always thought going into twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, that COVID would depress our revenues, and in a lot of areas, it turns out it didn't do that. So so that's good. We we appreciate you providing this. In the past, we have not always looked at our financial information on a regular basis and I I've talked to our county manager about having regular financial reports, because I I think that's good for us to have a better understanding on an ongoing basis of where we are, rather than when in the past, we just kind of wait to budget season to do that. Uh, that way we take a whole year approach.
Yeah, and I think uh and I think revenue wise, you can probably think of revenues, um, you're kind of getting into the more quote-unquote recession-proof or um something-proof type of revenues, when we're talking about property taxes, we have a great collection rate. Um, so you have to pay your property taxes, you got to think about it, you have you have to have water. Um, you, there's those, there's these certain areas for our revenue structure that, I mean, they're not things that you can necessarily just like not have. Um, so it would be very difficult to have a a deep imprint. Um, i- if you had a deep imprint to it, it would mean we're probably more like the like a Black Monday type of situation, I would say.
Well, and and diversifying our revenues is important because in the long run, we need to move away from such a a a great reliance on property tax. I think it's fair for everybody if, for property owners in particular, if we're not relying on them to shoulder so much of the burden of the county operations. I think we're moving in the right direction. Uh, other commissioners have questions? Mr. Franklin, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. I I was going to ask one other thing, uh, for the fall retreat, are are we prepar- this is kind of housekeeping. Are we preparing to eat lunch there, or should we bring our own lunch, or be, what's the plan there?
Um, and Kayla, we said, do we say snacks on that one? Is that right?
We're going to have snacks.
Okay, so we'll come.
Like granola bars, water, stuff like that.
We need to eat before we come.
Yeah, bring bring your lunch.
Okay, or bring your lunch. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
All right, the next agenda item is announcements, so Mr. Turner, do you have any announcements?
Uh, yes. Um, again, just uh reminding everybody about our Hometown Heroes event, that will be November thirteenth that Saturday, starting at nine o'clock with the ceremony at the courthouse, uh, and then moving on to a parade and the event going until seven, ending with fireworks. Uh, again, that'll be November thirteenth, Hometown Heroes event. Uh, we welcome the community to come out and celebrate and just honor uh the veterans, uh, but also just to have that community relationship uh and come out and support each other. Uh, other thing is just mentioning while voting as well, uh, Friday is the last day for early voting uh with uh this, that's this Friday, uh, with November second, next Tuesday, being uh uh election day uh from nine until five. So uh so we are definitely looking forward uh to those type of things. Um, uh, we do have, uh, again, just alcohol on the ballot uh as far as the county referendum, uh, so we uh do encourage everyone to come out to their voting precincts uh to talk about that. I believe, um, like we talked about in our Facebook video last week, Royston uh would have two locations, uh, one being the depot uh for county related matters and City Hall for city official elections, uh, but we do encourage everybody to come out there to vote. Um, other just quick note, going back to Hometown Heroes real quick, is um something uh for the public uh to have fun with, is that we do have the pie in the face event uh for our commissioners to participate and uh people to pay to throw a pie directly in your face. Well, we'll add, we'll add in Ms. Finger as well to that. She doesn't know that yet. But that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and I'm glad, I'm sorry, good. I'm glad you brought up about voting. Uh, the the county, the Board of Commissioners wants to know or or want citizen input on alcohol and unincorporated areas, so we encourage everyone to vote on those four referendum. Uh, whether you early vote through this Friday or vote on Election Day, make sure that you vote. And just to clarify, our next meeting is Monday, November the first. We have a public hearing that starts at five thirty and a regular meeting that starts at six, and we'll be at the Franklin County Justice System, so that will be in person. And then um, I think that's that's all I had. Uh, Commissioner Franklin, do you have any announcements?
No, sure, I don't have.
Okay, Commissioner Foster? You have any?
No, I don't.
Okay, Commissioner Swales?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Wester?
Uh, just a thank you to everybody that's worked hard on on our Hometown Heroes thing and uh and the dedication to the Veterans Plaza up there and everything. That that's been a lot of hard work and I appreciate everything that everybody's done. And uh, I also got good feedback about the Economic Development Summit for the citizens. I I did have uh two or three tell me that they really enjoyed it and it did open their eyes up to how things were working behind the scenes that nobody ever sees. So thank you to everybody for that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wester's made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Franklin, second's the motion. Uh, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, and Commissioner Franklin, how do you, do you vote for?
I I vote, let's go home.
Okay, all opposed, same sign? All right, the motion will carry four to zero. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone who joined us tonight, and we'll see everybody on Monday evening, starting at five thirty. Thank you, we're adjourned.